Bye.
Good evening, welcome. This is a Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, October 22nd, 2020. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. To the republic.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible.
With which justice from.
Thank you. Please be seated. I will note that Councilmember Gadilla is joining us remotely this evening. Let's have the roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mayor Abu Osley?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Gadilla?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you. This time we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. First on our agenda this evening, we have a couple presentations. The first one is regarding River View Center services related to sexual violence. Is everyone here to... or is it... are they remote?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Emily Parker. I am the Associate Program Director here at River View Center, and I am remote today. I appreciate the flexibility. I'm just gonna briefly go over just sexual violence awareness as it occurs in Marion. You know, it's important, and the reason why I'm here today is important to be aware as it occurs. I think one of the things that happens quite frequently is that we have this very objective view of what sexual violence means. Sexual violence starts with sexual harassment and extends into egregious crimes. And our work at River View Center is to really follow through with the empowering model with our survivors and do systemic advocacy within our community to raise that awareness so that we have a community that supports these survivors and their families. We are a 24/7 crisis advocacy center, meaning 365, 3:00 AM, whatever it is, we're gonna be there to support survivors. A lot of this looks like coming into the hospitals, being there when medical kits are being performed. Our role in the hospital room is to really let the survivor know that they have rights in that and do a lot of education about what's involved, what pathways that they can take, and empower them to make those decisions. We never tell survivors what to do. We just are that supportive partner along that way. We also provide peer counseling. When you access our services, which is 100% free and 100% confidential, just know that the person on the other side of the phone in this moment with a pandemic is there to believe you and support you through all of your decisions. We also work with secondary survivors. A lot of our secondary survivors look like family members of children who have experienced childhood abuse. We will provide legal advocacy within that. We will support the family with basic needs and just know that they can know within that confidentiality factor that the child will be assigned an advocate, but so will the parents. A lot of things happen as we process trauma, and the parents experience that vicarious trauma through their children and really go through a lot of different emotions, and we have advocates there to support them. Our 100% free also extends into therapy. A part of empowering our survivors is letting them know that, you know, you have a right and you have that autonomy to decide when, where, and how you're going to express your story. Through that is also insurance. So we seek additional funding through, you know, a lot of fundraising efforts and community partnerships so that we can provide that therapy. Play therapy is a huge component that we do provide. We have beautiful play therapy rooms in our Dubuque office and sand tray tables and things like that. Through the pandemic, we were able to secure funding and provide coping skill boxes so we could do teletherapy with our kids. We also go and extend services and get our therapists trained in EMDR, which is a very extensive form of therapy for this specific types of trauma. So a lot of those clients look like older adults who have had sexual violence occur in childhood. Our legal advocacy looks like, you know, preparing them for depositions and things like that, going to court with them and just standing next to them as they tell their story with their perpetrator 10 feet from them. We also assist with that general, and "general" is a general term in that it can look like, you know, maybe I don't have a meal to feed my kids over the weekend. I know River View Center can assist me with that, too. I haven't left my house in three months due to fear after my assault. Will an advocate come with me and walk with me through the grocery store because it's the only person that I feel comfortable around in this moment? We're gonna be there. In this moment, we are located in Marion. We have made the difficult decision to decide to move to downtown Cedar Rapids to be more accessible to the clients that we serve. But I just wanna let the city of Marion know and be aware of the fact that we will still be prevalent in Marion as their city and still want their input and guidance, and will be available as needed. We do serve 14 counties in Iowa, and so we can make it in our Decorah office that serves six counties with two advocates. We can still have an appearance in Marion. A part of the initiatives and really how it was connected today was through our SART team, SART meaning Sexual Assault Response Team. Historically, our SART team looks like law enforcement, sexual assault nurse examiners, Title IX offices in our college campuses, and advocates discussing the intricate details of cases to overcome barriers. I recognize that as a barrier within itself and went out and established relationships with community partners that see survivors every day because it really does not discriminate. And through this, we have a wonderful city council member attending these and providing input on a lot of the community-owned initiatives that we are doing. A lot of it being school-based education, starting with that prevention notion, working into different policies and ideologies in that sense. We are excited to move to our new location and would hopefully pandemic cross our fingers, who knows? When it ends soon, we'd love to have the city of Marion come and see that space. That is my spiel. If you have any questions for me, I'm open to that in this moment.
Hey, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Parker?
I have one, Mayor.
Renee?
Yes. Thanks, Emily, for coming tonight. At a recent SART meeting, I think it was our August meeting, we talked about putting together an updated packet of information to distribute to local law enforcement. I meant to ask at our last meeting where that was in the process, and just wondering if you could give us an update on that so that we could get it to police and fire because in Marion, our fire department does a lot of our medical calls, and sometimes the medical personnel are the first on the scene in some of these situations.
Yes, of course. At this moment, we did work with Brenda Hogan, who is a RN St. Luke's Hospital, and she was able to create that document. We are revamping our green folders, also known as our packets, and will be providing those. And I do appreciate, Renee, the reminder of how much our first responders are involved with working with survivors every day, and that's one of my initiatives moving forward with this physical year, to provide them that education. Prior to this, I did a lot of opioid work and was amazed of how much of the community that they are engaged with. And I think that that's definitely a focus area, and we would like to get those out here within the next couple of weeks.
Terrific. Thank you, Emily.
Yes, of course. Thank you for inviting me.
Sure.
Parker, thank you so much for coming to address the council and inform us on what you do. I wanna thank also Councilmember Gadilla and our Police Chief for volunteering to serve on the Sexual Assault Response Team. I think that's been going on since, well, maybe for at least a couple of months. So, and representing our city on that team, so thank you. Look forward to having the opportunity at some point to tour the new facility, so.
Yes, we will be downtown across the Paramount, from the Paramount Theater in the Higley Building.
Great. Okay, are there any further questions for Emily? Okay, thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is Marion Airport Vision, Dan Burr. And I will just note, if there are any questions, I will let the mayor pro tem manage those, so please go ahead.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you for giving me a few moments. When Mike first asked me how long this was gonna take, I said about 40 to 45 minutes, and then I saw your agenda, and it looks kinda long, so I'll try to keep it a little bit shorter. But I do realize that you gave me a little extra time because there's not a World Series game tonight, so thank you. And I also wanna say that Bo Swatik, I wanna make sure I said hi to you also.
Oh, great.
Because he knows he's coming tonight. But, so, so thank you very much. It's a... first, I wanna tell you kinda why I'm here talking in the first place. I was out at the Marion Airport ribbon cutting when they first cut the ribbon, and I was talking to Nick Blue, and he's like, hey, you've got a bunch of ideas that you're sitting here talking about, but why don't you tell the people that it matters, that people make decisions? So he's like, well, what does that look like? He's like, well, maybe you should go to the council and, you know, talk about a few of your ideas. So I put this together a couple of weeks ago, and bear with me if it goes a little bit long, and if I need to speed up, please let me know. But with this, as I was looking through some of the things that are, you know, on your website and stuff, I started looking through your strategic guidance from the 2001 that just came out, looks very good. And I just, I thought that some of these things that I had for ideas aligned to what your strategic vision is for Marion. So with that, I just started putting a few things together. They're really just ideas, so don't think that I have any kind of real solutions, okay? So first off, I guess, just a quick introductory slide of who I am and why I'm speaking today is I have about 30 years of naval service under my belt as a pilot, so I fly in, have flown into thousands of airports. And to include big airports, little airports, you can about name it. I'm a helicopter pilot by trade, so as you fly all over the world, you find yourself in a lot of different places. I had the very good fortune of being able to stay in for a long time and do a lot of really interesting things. And so when we talk about, a little bit about strategic visions, I've had the opportunity to work at a strategic level on a lot of different things culminating in my career where I got to work on a big 747 with the president. And so as you look at a lot of these, you know, big picture items, you know, this Marion Airport is a very big picture item. And so I just think that, you know, with the right focus, that it could be something just incredibly special. And then the other thing I wanna say is, you know, my wife and five kids, we like to fly. And so we had a little airplane for a while, and I bought into another little airplane that we like to fly around, and the perfect spot for it is Marion Airport, not necessarily at a larger CID airport, for the reasons of community. And we'll get into that in my slides. So the, on the theme of reach higher, so I'm continuing with that during this briefing, but I kinda thought about, like, what plan are we executing? And as I looked through that, I looked at a bunch of different plans that we had, and the plan that I saw executed recently fairly well is the Ames Plan. So I'm gonna talk about that a little bit, and you'll have to forgive me that I'm gonna talk about Ames at the Marion City Council meeting. And so embedded the plans that they have, and some of it been reworked even recently, and CID is, you know, they're executing marvelously on their plan that they started, you know, about four years ago. And if you've been through recently, you can see how nice it looks and all the upgrades that they've done. And so the plan that you guys have in place, it does look wonderful. And so I think it's at a point where now you start putting those plans in action, if you would. And so just thinking with, talking out loud of what that could look like. The runway obviously is a huge first step. I think today you also give the blessing for the runway. I think that's the plan later on today. And so when I first got here, I went out to Marion because there was rumor to this sidewalk slash runway, so I wanted to see it for myself. And so, you know, being a 30-year naval aviator, I was like, that's impressive. So these pilots that are training on that sidewalk, you know, I was like, they really could use a larger type runway. And then you guys made it happen. And so this huge first step of putting in a really nice runway. And so then I was like, well, where's it gonna go now? So I thought, well, possibly taxiways, and then started talking it through, and it's like, oh, there's a whole plane for us. So the more I looked, the more I found out, it's already in place. It just needs to be executed upon. So I thought that was really neat. And then, of course, for the future, I'll talk about different hangar facilities as an option, and then, of course, there needs to be an approach or a way to fly into the airport under what they call, you know, instrument conditions. So even if the weather is bad, you can still get into the airport. And that's a huge plus of flying into a smaller airport. And then finally, federal financing. So with all of this, you know, you talk about this being like a massive economic driver. And so, you know, Iowa has typically pulled in in the last couple of years about $60 to $70 million of airport improvement funds. And so in that process of becoming an airport that can receive those funds, you know, these 90-plus percent plus-ups for your 10% match, it produces this huge economic engine. And not only that engine, but also the engine of having more economic development around the airport, which, of course, you guys have already started with the Medco projects. Right, we'll skip the video. So some of the different... you can go to the next one, it's fine. So some of the things I wanna just talk about is had kinda big ideas. And what is in the realm of possible is, I'll talk about down in Iowa City, they have a kind of a more developed airport, and they have this thing called the Operator's Performance Lab. So we'll talk about that, talk about possible options for a Collins Museum. It may sound a little bit outlandish, but there is a Collins Museum stuffed away here. Just not a whole lot of people know about it. Has anybody here been to the museum? Wow, okay. So one of the largest corporations in all of Iowa has this museum here that nobody's been to, and it probably deserves a location like an airport like yours where people could actually go and look at the things that they have. I mean, incredible things like the things that originated global positioning satellites, GPS receivers, and things like that. These monumental things, radios that talk to astronauts. So it's, anyway, it's fantastic, and I think it should be advertised more. Comparison to local airports, I just got a quick spreadsheet on that. And then being different than other airports. So I have some pictures of what some airports can look like that have more of a community feel. And when I look at Marion Airport, I don't see it being like CID. I see it being more that airport that can handle the smaller aircraft, but at the same time, it has that draw where people wanna go there for a lot of different reasons. And so I'll show some pictures and then see if you can give me the thumbs up or thumbs down whether it can be done or not. And then I just thought was a lot of opportunity on the east side for commercial and residential area and future growth. All right, next slide. So this is what you have already. So you talk about the different service levels of an airport. It talks about basic, general, and enhanced service airport. And so you're trucking right along to being at a higher-level service airport. And in the study that you just did, it talks about, you know, it already has the higher-level services available. And so now it's just a question of, can you meet more of those services to make it an enhanced service airport? So I think that it's already very close. All right, next slide. So who's in your backyard? You know, and, you know, I'm speaking on behalf as a private citizen, of course, but they happen to be also my employer along with a lot of people that, you know, live in this community. And the unique thing about this is when I first came here, I didn't realize, I guess, the size of the business. And so I started looking back also, like, how do you compare it to largest companies and corporations in all of Iowa, all the Midwest? And you had to get outside of the state of Iowa to see something, you know, larger than these numbers. And so you've got this gem, of course, in the community you guys know about, but a lot of these people that work there also really enjoy aviation. And so, you know, these people that are also retired and working there would love to have a location where they could go out and enjoy aviation. Because a lot of us, as we've grown up in the aerospace industry, or the business, or the Navy, or the Air Force, is that we've had this real desire to see things fly. And so we're looking for places that we can do that. It's not necessarily behind a great big fence. All right, next slide. So for OPL, our Operator's Performance Lab, so they do have some fantastic facilities down in Iowa City. And so for our business, when we do a lot of research and development, we take it to an airport that has the capability to do it. So it was just thinking, if you've got this huge, wonderful business right here, then it'd be kinda interesting if you could keep some of that development, work, dollars, funds, efforts, local. And so if you had a place that could do that, which I think Marion could be one of those, if you had a nice hangar and a place where you could put something like this, and you could even probably work in concert with some of the efforts that go on down there. So they're flying everything from, you know, jets that we put, you know, manned/unmanned systems on to simulation systems to drones. And they have corridors. You can fly down here, but you could also fly down there, but you could also fly them here. So there's just almost endless opportunities if you have the facilities to do it. It could look very much like what we're doing down there. All right, next slide. So the museum, I kind of, you know, I asked about raising a hand, the people have seen it. So here's a couple pictures of the guys. There's a lot of Collins retirees that work in the museum, and they have guys that can go in to speak very succinctly to all the amazing things that are in this museum. It resides in Building 120 off in the corner, but it's not easily accessible by the public. And when you fly into almost any airport around the country, pretty much every time you go into the fixed base operator's place, you walk in, you open the doors, and it's almost like a little museum. So when you look at what your plan looks like, and you've got the FBO building all designed in there on the corner, what should happen is when you open that up or in a location near it is you have an awesome place where you can display all these things that are off in the corner. And just recently, I was down in Grinnell, Iowa, and I go inside the airport, because that's what I do as an aviation guy. And you go inside there, and here's this huge radial engine, and come to find out that in Grinnell, Iowa was the design and development of radial engines that were eventually put on aircraft during World War II that allowed us to win the war in Grinnell, Iowa. I mean, who knew that, right? So who knows that we created the radio to talk to the guys in the moon? You know, it's kinda one of those things. It's like, this should be advertised. There should be a place to do it. And I think that if you had a really neat place at the airport to do it, you would have people flying from all over the place just to see this stuff. It's like, it's world-renowned things that exist here. So I just thought that could be a rather neat opportunity that's right here in front of us. All right, next slide. So a little bit on the aviation history, kinda on that same theme. You know, I say from Art Collins to the Wright Brothers, and I had an article in the paper recently that said the Wright Brothers lived here. And I was like, come on, really? They start digging in this stuff, and then I found about 20 different names of like aviation legends that lived right in this area. And, you know, from the Wright Brothers to John Livingston, who was an absolute air race legend. Like back in the day, he won like 41 out of 60 of these massive air races back when aviation was just beginning to become a thing. And that happened here. Ellen Church, the first stewardess ever, ever in the entire nation, came from this area right here in eastern side of Iowa. Eugene Eli, or Ellie, depending how you wanna say it, another favorite of mine, because he was the first aviator ever to fly off the deck of a ship, like a naval aviator. So again, that guy, of course, came from right here. And so all these things could be like, people literally would come from far and wide to see memorabilia about folks like this. And of course, most everybody knows Amelia Earhart, right? I put her in there also. So Amelia, and I'll talk about dreams. She got her dream of flying in Iowa. So came up from Kansas City, lived in Des Moines, went to the air races and air shows, the state fair, and then later trained with a gal from Ames, Iowa, on how to fly airplanes. So there's just all this rich history that sits right around us. All right, next slide. I know you can't read this, kind of an eye chart, but the thrust here is we put together a bunch of our club that we have for flying. It grew and grew and grew and grew. And then we're doing comparisons between having our airplane at CID or having it in Marion. And so we wrote pros and cons, where to put it, what it had, what it didn't have, and then, of course, locations. So the thing I wanna focus on this is that this big group would prefer to be at an airport that's closer, which is Marion. But when you talk about facilities, then the answer became CID. But the reality is, is we'd much rather have the family-friendly atmosphere here. So, you know, and the other thing about the club is what started off as small just keeps growing and growing and growing and growing. So when you start something that's small like this, just like the Marion Airport, I have a feeling it's gonna grow and grow and grow and grow. All right, next slide. And here's where I start talking about Ames, so please forgive me. So Ames Airport, when I first got there, just not long ago, so my plan in life, I didn't know I'd come back to Ames, but in the end of my military career, I went back there to run the ROTC or the Naval ROTC, which trains new officers as you kinda replace yourself. Something I wanted to do, actually got the orders and went and did it. So in the process, going to Ames, they had this, what was a little airport, just not that long ago, about six years ago. And they came up with the same program that you have with capital improvements. And so this is the plan that just came out, and what I think is amazing is that they've really executed on this plan. It's become something special. And as you, I know there's an awful lot on there as airport plans have, but as you start to digest it, just in the left-hand side in the little corner is all that the airport was before. So then they built this absolutely fantastic fixed base operator site or FBO and a couple of hangars, and it's just really starting to blossom from there. And now we're bringing all kinds of business into our business park, our research park. And so I'll show a quick video on that also, about four minutes long. Next slide, please. So here's down, and the reason I blew this site up, this slide up, is down in the corner, it shows a little bit more of the economic development area down at the bottom. So if you're not familiar with Ames, that is our Ames Research Park, but really it's a business park, just like you have with Medco. So all these businesses have tucked themselves up right beside the airport because it makes it convenient. And so in the process of growing this airport, you're gonna have the same model of being able to grow the large industrial base that could be right beside your airport. And they're gonna expand it again to even have larger jets be able to land because it's been so successful. All right, next slide. So here's just some in the last couple of years. I know you're extremely familiar with most of the names on there. My businesses moved there. John Deere, Workiva, excuse me, Sue Cup that makes the grain bins, Vermeer, Behringer Ingelheim, Vertex Software, and then to make it even more of a community feel, they built a fitness center out there, which is absolutely fantastic. They put a hospital, little subsidiary of Mary Greeley, so you can get healthcare out there. And now all kinds of new restaurants have popped up out there. And then if you look at the green area, actually just to the south of the airport there, they did a bunch of work. When they first proposed it, I didn't think it'd actually get passed, but they spent a bunch of money to make a bunch of really neat trails and walkways and make it kind of a nature preserve area. So that happened also. So it's just this blossoming thing out at the airport that just keeps growing and growing. And that, I can't, I don't see that model being any different than what could happen here. You know, it's almost the same population type, population size. It mirrors that town quite a bit. Can you play that video real quick? You got it queued up. So this is a video from this area. It's from the So this is a video from this area, it's from the Ames Economic Development Commission. And so right there, they ended up building their new economic building, right there at the park, and then it brings in all these other businesses.
Founded in 1987, the Iowa State University Research Park is a technology community rooted in America's heartland, with a longstanding history of creating new opportunities for innovation and growth.
So the Research Park is sort of the crown jewel of Iowa State. It's one of the most successful research parks in the country, and you can see that by its growth, and how, how many new businesses have been here. It's got a culture and attitude of making it happen. They really get business, and they also are very supportive and creative. Every business has different needs, and the Research Park always sort of adapts to what, what each individual needs. And being in the heartland of Iowa, agriculture and animal health is respected, appreciated, and celebrated, and so it's a perfect fit for what we're trying to do.
Workkeva is in the Research Park because, in our mind, it's one of the best places to have a technology company in Iowa. We're located next to Iowa State, we have great access to talent, great resources around us, and it's a great place to start a business.
Suket Manufacturing's office within the Research Park community is a natural extension of our relationship with Iowa State, and allows us the opportunity to capitalize on the engineering and technical expertise of both students at Iowa State and professionals in the Iowa State Research Park. We've been able to hire interns to work throughout this school year. We get to utilize their talent, and they get real work experience. So it's been a very good win-win situation.
Been a great relationship with the folks at the Iowa State Research Park and at Iowa State, and we've got a great building here. We've learned, though, that a real key is the people you put in these buildings, all the way from the folks that are going to be directly creating relationships with the university, as well as the community, as well as the people you put in, in the environment here, that can help create a vibrant, fun, innovative place to be. And so we've been able to do that, and I certainly think that's been part of our success, as we've been able to go from one person in a leased facility just across the street to the beautiful building we sit in today.
When the founders built Engineering Animation in the 90s, they learned about the access to Iowa State through Research Park and what was possible to build here. Now, over the years, the community has grown, and it's become much easier to build a large business here. Research Park already built a lot of the relationships, and Workkeva was able to leverage that as we're growing in every step of the way.
What I've seen recently, that I've been very excited about, has been the Research Park really becoming the nucleus of support and nurturing and education for entrepreneurs. Programs like the Papa John Center and the ISU Startup Factory really provide a place where entrepreneurs can connect and learn how to build a business. They do a great job of marshaling mentor resources, and also provide a point where angel investors and venture capital investors can come and find out what opportunities exist to invest here. It's a fantastic place to grow and thrive. It's connecting the companies here with the talent, the space, and the community resources you need to grow and scale. That's what the Research Park does very, very well.
So live, work, play is alive and well at the Research Park. You can grab coffee in the morning, you can drop kids at daycare, and you're within one mile of the university. And so the Research Park employees and families, they enjoy world-class Big 12 sports, arts, music, good shopping, and world-class restaurants. And it's all really, within such a convenient spot, there's really no commute or no traffic jams in Ames, Iowa, and yet somehow, it's a little city with a big city feel.
I'm not sure if people always really understand the value of having this community around you. Having the space and the flexibility and everything is nice, but when you also have a lot of really smart people at other companies around here, and you bring those people together, it just creates a really cool environment. And it's a place where you want to be, it's the type of place you want to go and work. And we think it's the type of place that will attract people to move back to Iowa.
We've heard of the, the West Coast, the Silicon Valley-type areas in the past. We certainly believe this area has that same opportunity, particularly with agriculture, that five or 10 years from now, people will be talking about the Iowa State Research Park, they'll be talking about the cultivation corridor, and the many elements of this, that that's the place that innovation happens. That's the place you need to be.
So I, I think there's a lot of opportunity with the Medco Park, if I'm saying that right, that's already out there, for, to combine some of these efforts to drawing people in there. And I think the airport could be part of that economic driving engine. All right, next slide. So here's how it all started. So this is just that little vision of what you guys have in the corner and your plan. So this is called the Fixed Base Operator. So they found a way to get this done, and that was the, a huge growth engine of, of putting this all in place. I think this was 2016 when they, they finally decided they're going to do it, and then the last couple of years is putting the finishing touches on it. And I won't, you can read that later, but essentially, that's, that's what it looks like now. All right, next slide. So here's Marion Airport. So when I looked at this, I'm like, man, that, it looks very much like the airport that I just left. Could it, could it be something special? What would it take to make it special? You know, the cross one-way is probably needed, taxiways are probably needed, and that's all things that could come in the future, with future requests. Once you become a certain level of airport, it allows you to make larger requests for these airport improvement dollars. But I was like, that's what it should look like. All right, next slide. And so what it could look like in the future, so with the theme of, you know, having a more welcoming environment at the Marion Airport, these are some examples of other airports, of what they have on the facility grounds. So I was thinking to myself, if you had something like this, how much more it would attract people that would love to use it to make, make it more welcoming? And so I just have a couple pictures of, you know, if you had this opportunity, which it sounds like you may, because you're kind of starting from scratch, I thought you could have both, both the industrial base and kind of this commercial residential base also at the same airport. And these happen to have living quarters. I know that makes it, again, uniquely challenging, but as you work with the FAA with the master plan, then they either say yea or nay, or you can or can't do it. So ultimately, when I get old, my wife would say, I'm already am, but I want to, I want to live in a place like that. So if Marion could provide me with a home and a hangar, and park my car beside my airplane, I'm there, okay? So I would like to, you know, purchase a place like that, that has the Marion-type feel. And it may be, it may be a vision that's too far, but I thought this is, this is Dan Burr's vision of what an awesome Marion Airport could be. All right, next slide. So I think you can buy many opportunities from both sides of the airport, and I'm not sure how much R and D happens out there. I drove around, looks like there's a lot of opportunity for new businesses to move out there. There's, it seems like the economic driver is out that direction towards Walmart. You know, you got Culvers and pizza places, and, you know, the new gas station, I mean, it seems like it's going that direction. So there's props, I'm sure there's opportunities there for R and D also. All right, next. So the future is coming fast. So I think this is, this is uniquely unknown by most people. So I, we work with probably 250 different manufacturing companies of this thing called urban air mobility, and it's, it's coming fast. So electrified aircraft, personal mobility vehicles are here, and they're here to stay. And so not only do we need places to design, develop, innovate, we need a place to fly them. And so there will be economic hubs all over Iowa, they're going to fly these vehicles, you know? And actually, the list is over 300 of different companies that are making these. And so this is a very fast-moving train, and it's happening right now. And so as this happens, they're going to need airports like Marion to land, take off, to live, to fly, to play, and it's a possibility right now, if you get started now. So these are electrified, they can, they can fly them to Des Moines, you can fly them back. There's no CO2 emissions, they're, they're fantastic vehicles. And so we're providing the electronics, the guts, the controllers, everything right now, and the only thing it's waiting for is actually for the actual policy, the regulation around them, for the FAA to say, go do it. And as soon as that happens, it's not just all these urban mobility vehicles, but it's also cargo vehicles. So we're working with dozens of cargo-moving, flying drones, that they're going to fly from places like the Target Center, that is just north and west of us, to Target Facilities. The UPS, and FedEx, and Amazon, all have massive, multi-billion-dollar programs to support this. And again, they need places to go, and Marion could be one of them. So Marion is where your dreams come true, and so I put some pictures of some first solos. So in an airport like yours, is where I first started to learn how to fly, that turned into a 30-year career, and got to do some very fantastic things. Colette, also thanks for your service, and I know that you did a lot of this also when you're in the Air Force. And so when you get to go out to an airport where you can actually touch, look, see, feel the little airplanes, that's what causes the dreams to come true for a lot of people. And also, when you can fly your little airplane out there and solo, like these people in the picture, almost all those pictures are of their, their first solo, to include even the military picture, that's his first solo in a military jet. But you enable his dreams, not there, but it happens here. So if Marion can progress to the point where they have more of these capabilities, there'll be more people like me and those people in those pictures that want to go out there and learn how to fly. And it's actually a critical need right now, and I know that the COVID pandemic has really reduced the need temporarily, but it was almost, for the aviation community, it was almost a need, because we are so far behind in producing actual pilots. But another two to three years, we're going to be back in the same situation. There's not enough pilots to fly commercial aircraft from A to B, and there won't be in the future. So that's the limiting constraint, not the airplanes, but the people to fly them, which has to do why you want to try and make them autonomous in the future, when people are ready for that. All right, that's all I have. Any questions?
Well, Dan, we do appreciate your time. We appreciate your presenting a number of very interesting ideas, and we can certainly see your commitment and excitement regarding aviation. So anybody else have any comments, questions, clarification? Grant?
I, I found this, your articulation of a vision and what is behind it intriguing. I think it's probably no secret to my colleagues on the council that I have a fascination and an interest in aviation, albeit from a hobbyist perspective, a Part 107 drone pilot, which really exposed me to a lot of considerations in aviation that I think are helpful at this point. I would just say that one of the perspectives I've gained in the last few months since I've been part of the council is, we don't know what we don't know yet. And by that, I mean, I think we have to have some researched inputs to help us formulate a vision, much the way that we have visions for various sections of our, of our city, well documented and well communicated. And I think a critical group in helping drive that information collection to inform vision determinations has to be our airport committee. They have to be at a very active pivotal role in order to, in some cases, help decode what otherwise is pretty technical aviation speak, so that the rest of us can appreciate it and understand why something is necessary. And so I guess, using this presentation, I am hopeful that what we can do is loop back to the airport committee and chart a course to not build runway right away, not put in ILS right away, because we're not ready for it, but to chart a course by which we can have a vision come forth that we can consume and have information that informs a decision for the council that they can decide what, what, what the decision needs to be relative to ongoing financial commitment. We just don't know enough at this point, and I, I'd like to get over that hurdle so that we know enough.
Yeah, and just on that topic, I appreciate your feedback. The, so the FAA does support these large airport studies. I, I think the, they can be quite pricey, but they support them on the front side. And then you have people that are actually intelligent, not myself, about these airport, like the real deal thing you're talking about, they come in and actually brief the council. And I think you probably got a brief from your initial engineering study that you did for the, the initial airport, AOP. And so I think probably the next step would be to do one of these more in-depth studies like you talk about, that are a little more expensive, and then have these people that are experts in working with the FAA and what it takes to get it across the line, if you would, to come and brief the council, and of course, the entire city, about the opportunity to do that. And I think that would inform, you know, those, those decisions.
Anybody else? Renee? You okay?
I'm good, thanks.
All right, very good. Thank you. Seeing no other questions, we'll turn the meeting back to the mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. At this time, we have our public forum, which is a section of the meeting that is set aside for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. Did we have anyone asked to speak?
I do not.
Okay. We'll wait just a moment, make sure that no one at home is emailing us.
I think Seth Green did raise his hand. Seth, that will be the public forum at the end of the agenda, is your items.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F3, resolutions 28927 through 28943.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F3, resolutions 28927 through 28943. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved. Moving on to the next part of the consent agenda, turn the meeting over to Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abouasely's abstention from voting in discussion as follows. Items E1 through E3, resolutions 28944 through 28946.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve items E1 through E3, resolutions 28944 through 28946. These are the consent agenda items with Mayor Abouasely's abstention. Is there any discussion on these three items? If not, all those in favor of approving them, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The items, resolutions are approved with one abstention. Next is the regular agenda. Ms. Goodell.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28947, approving a merchant processing agreement with Automated Merchant Systems Incorporated.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number 28947, approving the merchant processing agreement with Automated Merchant Systems Incorporated. All those in favor of the motion to approve resolution number 28947, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28948, approving the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 capital budget transfer from local option sales tax to capital projects for the library project in the amount of $2,865,000.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number 28948, approving fiscal year 2020-21 capital budget transfer from the local option sales tax to capital projects for the library project in the amount of $2,865,000.
All those in favor of approving resolution number 28948, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28949, authorizing funding agreement with- Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28949, authorizing funding agreement number 1357 with the Iowa Homeland Security Emergency Management Department, Federal Emergency Management Agency for Public Assistance Grant number 4557.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number 28949, authorizing the funding agreement number 1357 with Iowa Homeland Security Emergency Management Department, Federal Emergency Management Agency for Public Assistance Grant number 4557. For people who didn't join our meeting on Tuesday, our work session, this is the agreement that allows us to receive the FEMA assistance and reimbursement for the derecho cleanup. Any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number 28949, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28950, approving contract amendment number one with Debris Tech LLC for debris monitoring services.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number 28950, approving the contract amendment number one with Debris Tech LLC for debris monitoring services. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 28950, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 28951, approving partial payment number one to Southern Disaster Recovery for emergency debris removal services in the amount of
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number 28951, approving partial payment number one to Southern Disaster Recovery for emergency debris removal services in the amount of $3,888,317.54. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of resolution number 28951, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion's approved.
Mayor, I make a motion to direct staff to solicit bids for emergency waterway debris removal.
Second.
It's been moved in second to direct staff to solicit bids for emergency waterway debris removal. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved. Ms. Goodell?
Yes, Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28952, approving partial payment number one to Wendling Quarries, Inc. for final disposition of storm debris in the amount of $190,337.53.
I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mayor Protem for the for this and the next item.
Okay, go ahead. So we got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28952, approving the partial payment number one to Wendling Quarries for $190,337.53. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number 28952, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution 28952 is approved with one abstention.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number 28953, approving the partial payment number one to Wendling Quarries Incorporated for the purchase of aggregates associated with the temporary debris reduction site in the amount of $94,059.74.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28953, approving the partial payment number one to Wendling Quarries for the purchase of aggregates related to the temporary debris reduction site. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving resolution 28953, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution 28953 is approved with one abstention. I'll move the meeting back to the mayor.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28954, approving Highview Fifth Edition Final Platte and Memorandum of Agreement for property located south of Tower Terrace Road Extended and either side of Newcastle Road.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve resolution number 28954, approving Highview Fifth Edition Final Platte and the Memorandum of Agreement for the property located south of Tower Terrace Road Extended and on either side of Newcastle Road. This is for Dustin Kern. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number 28954, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Next on the agenda is a 2020 storm response update. Lon?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have a whole lot to report tonight that you haven't already heard earlier in the week. We did have a visit today with a representative from the National Resource and Conservation Service. City engineer Barkalow did tour them around the community to show them the condition of the city's waterways. As we're starting to wind down the debris collection in the public right of way and on the public properties, that's really the next thing we need to turn our eye to. Marion, I think, is particularly sensitive to this issue after we had a major flooding event back in 2002. And then over a series of years after that, put a lot of effort and a lot of money into our waterways to get them ready, get residential properties moved out to make sure that we were less prone to flooding and had less risk for future floods. But now with this, we have trees and debris in all of our waterways again. And in some cases, we also have to pay attention to what does it look like if the stream banks start to erode? A lot of those areas that have been hit quite heavily, the tree roots were in many cases, the things that were keeping the stream banks where they were. So there's just going to be a lot of work associated with that. The city council tonight authorized us to do the RFP for that piece. It's the single biggest unknown yet as far as the being able to give you the full overall cost of what the recovery is going to look like. So once we get those bids back in, we'll really be able to better wrap our heads around what the entire disaster response and recovery efforts are going to look like.
Are there still 20? At one point, we had 20 of the trucks. Are there still 20 in the community now? Or is it less?
There's still right at 20, Ryan. It was starting to wind down. 12?
12, okay. And that'll remain the same number for the waterway clean? Or I guess it's different equipment that's used for the waterway?
Yeah, different equipment used for waterways.
Okay. These trucks will stay around until everything's cleaned up and, okay. Okay. Any other questions for Lon?
This week was the week where we asked everybody to do kind of last call and get everything out. I think the, from what I was able to observe, this community seemed to respond to that because they got a lot of stuff out, maybe a little bit more than we expected. But our contractors have done an exemplary job in keeping up.
Heard nothing but compliments and good comments about the contractors and the way this has all been handled. So yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just two quick comments. First of all, I think you can start sense a change throughout the community. When everybody drives around, they're not seeing these piles of debris. So I think you're seeing a increase, a better sense and mood throughout the community. But the other thing I just find would be a kind of a neat thing for the Gazette or the TV stations to pick up on is to do a story about the companies, Southern Disaster, or even the one in Cedar Rapids, same type of people, that they came to our area and they have been here for, what, nine or 10 weeks now? They're going to be here a while longer. And so I think it'd be an interesting article is to talk to some of those people because they basically packed up, came here. I don't even know where they stayed because when they came here, you couldn't find a hotel room for, you know, 40 miles. So I think it'd just be an interesting personal article about some of those people and the companies and what they do because they've given our community a tremendous service. And as Nick says, they've done an exemplary job, so.
Renee, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on a couple of things as well. Just again, kudos to these companies, our staff and everything. We just want to share a real brief item here. We, I've got one of my catastrophic storm team adjusters back in town this week. We're super excited to have him. This gentleman's out of Wichita, Kansas. And he arrived on the 12th of August. And as a company, as all companies, we were overwhelmed with that. And so we welcomed him back in our office this week. He's back to do what's called re inspections. These will be homes that have now had some further ongoing damage to homes. After the trees come down, we, as all companies, we assess the current damage, but tarps have come off, they've had to be reapplied. The water damage continues to escalate and expand the losses. But John returned back home, he was here for three weeks, returned back home, and a week later was dispatched out to north of Salt Lake City, Utah. If we all recall, they had high wind storms out there. And so we kind of chuckled a little bit because they they had winds of 71 miles an hour was their maximum speed out there. And and it lasted for 40, 45 minutes like that. And so John kind of had to refrain a little bit because of the experience that he had had here in Iowa. Our reports are telling us that we had between 141 and 150 before the meters went offline. So as a company, and I think a lot of companies in our industry are measuring up Marion and Lynn County as to what their disaster programs will be in the future. And there's a lot of eyes, I know, looking at our community around here from the insurance industry as we're experiencing some of that. So I just wanted to kind of explain again, as we're all kind of, I think we're still trying to measure the magnitude of what this thing has done on a larger national level. So like you had mentioned, Councilman Jensen, I think we will see some things come. I know that there's been some video productions being done privately from experience. That's going to be shared with the public in the future. So there, there are a lot of silver linings to this. So thank you.
One thing I would say, just to wrap it up, is that we've talked a lot about the physical part of the response, the emergency services, what public services has done, what parks has done. But I really wanted to call out and say thank you to the building department, even the building inspectors who are accompanied by the library staff going out and doing the initial damage assessments. That was all during the initial response period. But ever since then, with the hailstorm back in April, and now the permit texts and the people at the front counters are putting in a huge amount of effort and are under a lot of stress just trying to keep up. The library has been kind enough to loan us some staff for some temporary help upstairs. But just want to, everybody to remember that for everything that you see outside of the building, for now and probably the next year, a lot of that activity is going to be hitting us inside the building as well.
Other questions for, yes, go ahead.
I was wondering about the status of the tree removal, the removal or clearing of hanging branches, not necessarily in the parks, but more the street trees.
You have a percentage on that, Ryan or Seth, about where we're at?
Really? How many vehicles are still here working on that? Or?
You might repeat the answer for people, for the recording and for the people watching from home.
We've got four vehicles out there dedicated to working on the trees right now.
Is there any work on stump grinding yet? Yes, on right of ways or just in, I know the park got done, but any in the right of ways? Are they?
Yeah, they are starting on right of ways.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Just to tag on to the comment that Councilmember Jensen was making about, you know, a publicly visible story about the responders that came to our aid, I would just add to that, I think a lion probably had a response from across the nation of crews coming into the area on a mutual aid standpoint to also help string new lines and get poles reconstructed and the like. That's a common practice in the utility business. And I would well imagine that's an interesting story to know how many out of state crews came to our support. I do have two questions. Is thinking about the waterways, how many miles approximately of waterways do we have to be concerned about? 10? Okay, thank you. And then one specific question, is there further work pending for the Indian Creek Country Club to removal? Or is that that is remaining their responsibility? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there's additional debris there. We have removed what we could reach from right of way. But we don't want to have an issue if a contractor moves in there and causes damage to the parking lot or anything like that or driveways. We have to have an agreement that allows us to go on to the property to do that.
Well, that was a tremendous improvement getting that out of the right of way. So thanks for those efforts. Thank you.
Well, and just in general, and since the debris removal from commercial properties happened, I think that that made everything look better and made everyone feel better. So, but that happened quickly as soon as we got the FEMA approval, so. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lon. This time we have a public forum. This is time that's set aside for members from the public, comments on anything that is not on the agenda this evening. Do we have anyone who contacted us ahead of time?
Yes, Seth Green should be on Zoom.
Seth?
Hi there. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I have a project that I'm proposing for Marion here. And I've had some frustrations and stuff, so maybe you can give me some guidance. We have a self-storage facility existing right now on Lindale Drive and approximately Blair Sherry Road, if you're familiar with that area. We've been here for probably about seven, 16 years, 15 years in that area. So we're proposing one. I think you can see on the map there that they have up where this is located. It's right on 151 and 13. We're proposing a storage facility that hasn't been actually built in Cedar Rapids, Marion, or this area. We have three other facilities similar to this, one in Dubuque on the northwest arterial, one in Waterloo, right off of San Marnon and Highway 20, and one in Ankeny, right off of North Ankeny Boulevard. So this would be a new concept to this whole community here. And it's a three-story self-storage, all contained. It's a climate control, that's kind of what we do. And we're, we're excited about this location. We've tried to present properties. And one of the frustrations we have is the zoning. And we're going, you guys are going through the new zoning codes and trying to rezone, I think, all areas in the community. So currently, right now, it's zoned properly, it's zone C3, and we fit in the C3 zoning. But they're starting the process to finalize that. And I'm not 100% sure what the process entails, how long of a process it is. I've reached out to some of the council members, or maybe all of you, some of you I've spoke to, and we're excited about it. We've got some flexibility. We actually proposed a three-story with some single-story. And we haven't had a lot of, I guess, positive feedback that they think something better could go on that corner. Our projects, this one probably would be between $6 and $7 million. And everything is inside. We have an inside unloading bay. We've done this in three different cities. We're actually, in three of the cities, we're right next to a residential neighborhood. One of the statistics with self-storage is about, it's 9.4% of citizens use self-storage. So that's about 10% of Marion's population. The, when they use service, they want it within three miles of their house. They can go all the way up to a five-mile radius, but the national average for storage is most They can go all the way up to a five-mile radius, but the national average for storages, most people will not look outside the five-mile radius unless you have something special like a climate control and that's what they're after. So storage really works well by residential neighborhoods and close to their house. That's where it's convenient. When people have too much stuff, they put it in here. So the frustration we have is we're going through the zoning. So we have an option on this property. We are going to move forward and we talked with the planning department and I guess we have three options. The first option is we can try to race our project through and get it approved beforehand. But the dilemma with that is, I guess, the new code is if this gets rezoned to a different district that doesn't allow it, we would never be able to rebuild this project, which I'm, I don't know if that's a hundred percent accurate or not, because I haven't done a lot of research on this. But as you guys go through this process of approving it, I think this will be probably brought up and addressed or whatever along the way with all different types of zoning. If they're changing the zoning, I think it could affect a lot of different businesses or properties. Then the second option is have you guys rezone this, but I don't know how that actually works because this hasn't been approved for where it doesn't fit into it. So it's going to go from a C three to a BR district. And self-storage is not allowed in it. Currently, under the current zoning, we're allowed in six different zonings. And now they're taking it down to only two different zonings. It would be M one and M two. So it's all industrial. Storage doesn't really work in an industrial park. It's too far from the residents and this, we could jump back one property or two properties and we would be. But visibility is a huge thing with any business, you know, drive-by is a huge thing. So it's been frustrating because we're going to, I'm, a project like this, we probably will spend about a hundred thousand dollars just to get it to the point of a site plan and ready for the city to approve. With that, we're going to, we're unsure of ourselves because we're going to have to spend this with them trying to race us on zoning this differently and it, it's a bad position that we're in. It's a lot of money to spend. I'm just a one-person business and it, I guess I need some guidance, what I can do on this. And I guess what I'm looking for too is what the planning department has always said is the council does not like self-storage and that's one of my frustrations because the ones that I've talked to, they said they really don't have a position either way. So I guess that's what I'm trying to get the feed of, what can I do? How can I go about this and how can I make this? I want the city to be proud of this project and I want to be proud of it. I don't want to try to race a project through and just to get it zoned or get this project through and not have a well-planned-out project. So I guess I would just ask for some input.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Green?
Yes, go ahead.
Seth, this is Grant Harper speaking. And I'm one of the council members that you did in fact speak to. You mentioned that there were three options that were facing you, one of which was accelerate the project and build under existing zoning, which then creates a situation that if you ever had to rebuild in that location, that wouldn't be an option. What are the other two options that were presented to you?
I, I believe it was the city, the council could rezone this. Or change the zoning on this plan, I believe on this new zoning plan before you actually approve it and make it where it would be. So this borders right next to, and that's where I'm a little confused because I thought that whole area out on, you know, it would be east of thirteen and south of one fifty-one. I always thought that was all industrial park there and that was Marion's industrial park. So I think it's an awesome fit because that's really where they want us. But they're making certain properties, this BR district and other properties along that corridor not BR districts. And I don't know if it's, I guess, I don't know how that process worked, how they decided what did get BR and what didn't get BR. Because you go down a little farther, like the DOT, all the properties now along that corridor got changed to BR except for like the DOT station, Hup Electric across, Carroll Construction Company across the way. But certain ones did and certain ones didn't and there really wasn't consistency. But I don't know if you guys did that or if it was the planning department or what. So that was one that I think you guys can make that change or give input to the planning department. And the third one.
The, the third option would be to amend the proposed zoning code to allow storage in the BR district.
This one, sorry?
Oh, sorry, my assistance with me. So the, you guys could amend it that it would.
Please, an address? Hello?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, we, we need the name and address of anyone who's addressing the council.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name, my name's Brian Griswold. Eighty Oklahoma Ave Southwest from Cedar Rapids.
Thank you.
Um, so as I, so the third option is to amend the zoning, the new proposed zoning code to allow storage in the BR district. So the, the zoning map update is to change this property from a C three to a BR. So we can race to get there. We can change it from the BR to an M one or two, the industrial district which allows storage. Or the third option is to amend the proposed zoning code to allow storage in the BR. Those are the three options.
Is that all your comments?
Yes.
Okay. So does it make sense to put this on a work session agenda?
Yeah, the council wants to be able to have discussion. I mean, at this point, as you know, it's for public comment, but not really to engage in discussion and make recommendations. So if you want to deliberate it, we'd just put it on a future agenda.
Okay. Did you hear that, Mr. Green?
Yes, I did. Yes.
It's not an agendized item. We can't deliberate or, 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 you know, talk about it amongst ourselves and agree on any kind of course of action, but we, I think we could put it on an agenda for the future coming up for, for a work session agenda, which are on the Tuesday prior to the meeting and have it discussed by, by the staff with the council so that the council can get a full understanding of what the options are and what's going on, that we could make an informed decision. Okay?
Okay. And who would we reach out to get that done?
Either through the development department staff or the city clerk.
And can anybody explain the process of this rezoning, what the process is? So I kind of have an idea. This new rezoning timeframe and what the process consists of?
Is Tom with us?
I believe Tom was on the Zoom if he's still connected.
Yeah. Tom, do you want to do that now? Or do you want to get ahold of Mr. Green outside this meeting to go through the, the zoning?
Yeah, I think it'd be best just to speak with, with Seth on it. I, I thought we kind of covered it, but we can certainly revisit it as well.
Well, I, I guess the one concern, I, I, I didn't know if, when I talked to a council member, they wanted, or they said that they would probably try to approve all the wards at once. But the planning department said they were trying to plan or, or get the approval or you're voting on it or however you do it ward by ward and not take it all, the whole city at once. And that's what I was, the council member thought they would do all the wards at once and the planning department, I think, or explained to me that they were going to do it ward by ward for the approval.
Okay. We haven't been, as far as I recall, we haven't been briefed on that at all in terms of the, how it's actually going to be done. So again, that probably could be cleared up within your discussion with the development department staff.
Okay, perfect. Yep.
Thank you. And I, and I think any of us would still be happy to talk with you or meet with you outside the, outside the meeting, but.
Yep. And anybody can reach out to me. I would love to discuss this project with them if they have any questions. So.
And thank you for your interest in, in doing this project in Marion.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any others to address the council?
There's that.
Okay, then we'll move on to council comments. We'll start with the council member Harper.
One of the great things that I see is done in the city is the the newsletters that Amber creates. And I was looking through that and one caught my eye, which I wanted to do, one article caught my eye that I just wanted to call out tonight. And that is that Mr. Barcalow was elected as president of the Iowa Board of the American Society of Civil Engineers. Normally I feel compelled to, you know, be in awe when I'm working with him, but now I feel even more so that way. Congratulations, Mike. Congratulations, Mike.
Anyone else? Okay. Will, you're good? Okay, Colette?
No comments tonight.
All right, Randy? Renee, do you have anything?
Yeah, two quick things. First, I'd like to thank Emily again for enlightening us to another valuable community resource despite the relocation. They will have a strong presence and be an organization that we can lean on in matters as Emily described. And then secondly, I just want to point out for the people who do attend these meetings that we are moving our next meeting from, normally our work sessions are on Tuesday, but because of the general election, we'll be moving it to Monday, the second. So that people have even a clearer schedule to make sure they make a plan and get out and vote if they haven't done so already. For the general election on Tuesday, November the third. I just want to encourage everybody to get out there because it is all the way from federal to county level on the ballot. So be heard. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Renee. For my part, I just want to mention that yesterday I had a chance to get a little sneak preview of the progress on the YMCA. It's an absolutely beautiful facility that I think we'll all be very proud of. I'd like to set up a time when council members and staff, the YMCA has offered that so we can set up a time in the near future when, when you can go and tour that. It's coming along very nicely. Steve, I know you're there every day probably, but. Yeah, I, there's such great excitement about that in the community. I think it's something we're all going to be proud of. Renee mentioned that our neck, our work session on, for the third has been moved to the second because of the election and City Hall is a polling station, polling location. So just remind everyone that at four o'clock on Monday, the second is our work session. Leading up to the election, you know, things get heated and there's this, it seems to be a lot of division. I would just remember, remind everyone of the derecho and those two weeks right after the derecho. What a unifying event that was for our community, how while everyone came together and kind of put aside all the differences and just recognized what we have in common and worked together as a community. It was as devastating as that was, it was very refreshing and encouraging to go through that experience with the community and to see everyone come together without regard for who they're helping or, or, or anything, or any differences they might have politics-wise or with anything. And I think it just showed when we come together, we, there's nothing we can't accomplish and there's no challenge that we can't overcome as a community. And we have so much, so much to be happy about, even in this year of many, many challenges, we just have, we still have a lot of positive progress, a lot of good things going on. We've had new businesses open, thirteen or fourteen businesses in the uptown. And we see people such as our presenter this evening who see potential in Marion from throughout the region and throughout the state. We hear it, you know, people look at Marion and see the potential here. And it just takes us as a community to to, to see that potential too and to share in that positive self, self-image and, and see that potential in ourselves. We've been reaching higher and I hope we can continue to reach higher to achieve our full potential for, for the residents who live here now so that they can all have a great quality of life. So one final thing I want to mention, I've been working and staff has been working, Ryan and Seth, been working with a team of Iowa Big students who are going to do something positive with the derecho damage. They, they are working with chainsaw artists who are going to take tree debris and carve sculpture out of those and will build, sell them online in an auction on the week, the week of Thanksgiving. That Sunday is Artist Sunday. And so that, that'll be the culmination of the auction and they're going to donate the funds to replanting trees. So when you see the news, they, they, they're coming out with a press release and when you see the news about that, I hope everyone supports it and promotes that. The artists will actually be doing the carving in City Square for a week, is it a week or two weeks, Seth? Is it one week? For a one-week period. People will be able to drive by or stand on the sidewalk and watch them. And I think it's just a really cool project that they're trying to take something negative and create something positive out of it. And it was the idea of a Lamar student and some of her friends who participate in Iowa Big. So with that, have a great weekend, everyone, and we'll see you next time. Meetings adjourned.